I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and. Welcome to the May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen county commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphone. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device Craig can help you and he's up here up in the front row. With that, we'll move on to routine business and I would look for a motion to amend the agenda. Commissioner Bender.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to act, to add an executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purposes of S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, sub paragraphs one and three.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second to amend the agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended, I believe.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is to approve the minutes from the commission meeting on May eighth, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion?
Approve those minutes.
Second.
A motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special Minnehaha County area tour minutes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Does anybody who went on the tour want to make a comment on it? No one?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I talk too much, let Gerald speak.
Commissioner Banega.
I approve that motion. I was amazed at the businesses that we have in our county that frankly are under the radar in some cases but have done such an amazing job of growth and keeping local people employed but also keeping that home flavor, if you will. It's amazing that, I just don't think that they fly their flag as much as they could and it was a learning experience and certainly educational.
Anybody else? We took a bus tour just around, for those of you who didn't know, a bus tour around some of the businesses in Minnehaha County, commissioners and several other people planning and zoning and, and a few other people. It was, it was very educational, it was very fun. It's no fun to give up a day but it was well worth going and it went very fast. So, this is the second time we've done it and I anticipate we'll probably continue to do it because it's really good project, so. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of six hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, is there a motion?
Be the bills.
Second.
A motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, item A is the auditor's account with the county treasurer for April, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Item B is Minnehaha County coroner's report for March, two thousand eighteen. Item C is the Minnehaha County sheriff's report for April, two thousand eighteen. Item D is register of deeds revenue report for April, two thousand eighteen and those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions, item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is consider a motion to approve the proposed changes to the Minnehaha County employee handbook session on overtime and compensation pay.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We're asking for your approval on a small change to our employee handbook this morning. Right now, in accordance with FLSA regs, we pay overtime to staff who work more than forty hours in a work week. We're asking to put in a provision for law enforcement related positions. This follows FLSA regs and would result in staff receiving overtime pay if they work more than eighty-six hours in a two-week period. The reason we're requesting this is the air guard is related to the air guard security contract. In honesty, it works best for our staff, it works best for the air guard and will allow us to come up with a schedule that works best for everybody. If this is approved, we would ask that it be effective starting with the next pay period. Captain Walsh is here if you have any additional questions but we're asking for that minor change effective next pay period.
Commissioner Bender.
Carrie, I just want to clarify, this doesn't affect a union contract, so it won't override the union contract.
No, very good point. It does not affect anybody covered by a contract.
Okay, thanks. Additional questions? Commissioner Banega.
I would move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
All right, thank you.
Item number six is abatement recommendations for approval, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests, item A is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice on hearing of proposed revision of the Minnehaha County ground ambulance ordinance. Are there any questions on that? Lynn is not here today, so Olivia would answer any questions if you had, otherwise I just need a motion to authorize publication. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is D P N O number nine, one, four, zero, nine, in the amount of five hundred ninety-three dollars and ten cents. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Patricia Johnson has applied to compromise lien, D P N O nine, one, four, oh, nine, in the amount of five hundred ninety-three dollars and ten cents with no payment, only as it applies to the property legally described below, with a street address of thirteen fifteen East Third Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five, seven, one, oh, three. The legal description is lots thirty-one and thirty-two, block ten, Highland addition to Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat thereof. The lien represents poor relief, it's attached to the property, if approved as requested, this action would leave the lien in place and in full against the individual named on the lien. The applicant owner of the real property entered into a contract for deed with a lienee on September twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen. The lien was recorded October seventeen, twenty sixteen. The lienee defaulted on the payments, has vacated the property and executed a quitclaim deed on March second, twenty eighteen. Ms. Johnson's attorney, James Simcoe, is here and available for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Melinda? Any questions for Mr. Simcoe or the applicant is also here? Did you want to say anything? I'll give you the opportunity to if you would like to.
Sure, I would like to thank you.
Sure. I think he asked.
Yeah, Jamie, I'd like you to come up here. The applicant does not have to but we'd prefer that you would identify yourself.
Sure. James Simcoe of Cadwell Sanford Divert and Gary Law Firm in Sioux Falls, on behalf of Patricia Johnson. I think the important thing in this case is that the lien itself will remain valid, we're just asking it to be released from Ms. Johnson's property because the lien attached when the contract for deed was recorded and Ms. Jensen, who, which is who the lien is against, had an equitable interest in the property pursuant to that contract for deed. She's defaulted, she's no longer in the property and we're trying to get the title cleared up for Ms. Johnson in the most effective, cost-efficient manner as possible. And since Ms. Jensen no longer has an interest in the property, we'd like that lien released as to this property and then if she ever acquires other property, it's just another property, the county aid lien would attach to that.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to relieve it from the property and put it on the individual that received the benefit.
Second.
I have a motion.
I do have a comment though.
Commissioner Barth, comment.
I think that selling a property, contract for deed is a risky business because you don't really, you know, you could have not just this kind of lien, you could have a mechanic's lien, you know, and be cautious.
Yep. I have a motion as second to approve removing the lien from the property and leaving it against the, the person who incurred the expenses. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Oh, motion passes.
Opposed.
Opposed. Four to one. Excuse me, thank you. Next we have opport, thank you, Melinda. Next we have opportunity for public comment and this is if you would like to speak about something that is not on today's agenda, you need to identify yourself, give your address and we give you five minutes, so if there's anyone. Mr. Major.
And I'm assuming that it's not on the agenda, correct?
You are not on the agenda, so you get five minutes to talk about whatever you want.
All right, well, we won't take that much time. So, J. Major, two, five, nine, six, eight, four hundred and seventy-sixth Street, Sioux Falls, is my address. I'm the president and CEO of MedStar Ambulance in Brandon and in the county here. So, you know, there's three services that everybody loves but nobody likes to see. One of them is the police department, one of them is the fire department, and one of them is an ambulance service. And up until this point, you know, we've, and we all know the struggles we've had in the ambulance service part, well Lynn DeYoung has done an absolutely fantastic job working with the ambulance providers from Paramedics Plus and Mike down there to all the volunteer services, including ours. And we've been spending the last year or so putting together what we believe is going to be the most beneficial thing for the county, which you'll be working on here in the next couple of weeks. The reason I'm standing here in front of you is simply to say, I think it'd be in your best interest if you could, and, and James Yasbrand is our new PR guy, he's going to be contacting all of you and what we want to be able to do is kind of bring you out in the county, not just with MedStar but I, I would hope that you go see the other services and not only look at what you're asking us to do but look what we've done. Look at the assets that we have for the city, not just the one thing but all the assets that we have for the counties and the cities that we provide for. And that one-on-one, we can answer a lot of the questions that you may have reading through the applications and so forth. So, the reason I'm standing here today is first off to thank Lynn, we followed the Fitch study, we, we watched and looked through all of that stuff, we all put our input in and believe it or not, probably the first time in history, all the ambulance services got together and agreed on everything for the betterment of the society here in this part of South Dakota. So, anyway, if James does give you a call, which he will, and we've already spoken with some of the counselors here, commissioners, counselors, I get them mixed up, but, anyway, we would appreciate you guys coming out and viewing what we've done here the last, since two thousand and nine when we first achieved our license and, and I know that the other ambulance services would love to have you come out and, and kind of take a look at their assets and so forth that we all have for the county. So, I appreciate it, thank you for including us in this process and I thought it was a great process, Maggie was part of that process, Dr. Luther, and, and again, we look forward to a longstanding relationship with the county and providing great service, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay, for the invitation too. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners, Nikki Gronley, two, four, six, two, zero, four hundred seventy-ninth Avenue, Del Rapids, South Dakota. And this morning I'm just bringing you more of a cautionary message, as we've seen in the media that the city of Sioux Falls was recently hit by a spear phishing scheme. Cybersecurity is the area I work in and approximately ninety percent of these breaches occur because of human error. And upon just knowing some people in the county, I know currently there is no annual education for the employees on cybersecurity. The weakest link for you guys is going to be the people. People get tricked, people get targeted and I'm asking you to consider making sure that annually you are training because you house such valuable data here. And for the constituents, if that data gets taken, it really could impact the lives of people here in Minnehaha. So, anyway, I'm just asking you to think about annual training for your employees and both the city and also the chamber in the last few years have been hit and it has been human error. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about something that is not on today's agenda? Okay. I just also want to make a note that, we were talking a little bit about ambulances here, that because the second reading for the ambulance, which was item number seven, public notice, we had the first reading, the second reading of the proposed ambulance ordinance revision has been rescheduled due to technical error. It would have been today and that's, so if you have any other questions, you can talk to staff about that and they can fill you in. With that, we'll move on to regular business. Item number ten is a brief presentation on the sheriff's office and the jail diversions, divisions, excuse me, divisions. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. I brought backup with me, most of the back row. And I'm going to give a couple of them the opportunity to talk about their respective divisions, so it's kind of interesting that we're able to give our briefing on the sheriff's office operations during National Police Week. In nineteen sixty-two, we go to the next slide. So nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed this as Police Week and it's interesting from, from my perspective, I was in second grade and I've told this story over and over but my dad was a highway patrolman and I was late for school in Aberdeen and he gave me a ride to school on the back of his motorcycle, highway patrol motorcycle, I was, at second grade. And I put my arms around him and I said, "This is really cool." And, and I had such respect for my father, he stood ten foot tall and I said, "I want to do this someday." And I, and so here I am, a few years later, but I have tremendous respect for this profession and the sacrifices made by our officers and our families and, and I just find it honored to continue to serve as a sheriff and to be able to have almost two hundred and fifty employees that are dedicated professionals and they're being recognized this week. And there's a lot of activities that have gone on already, there's memorial service today in Washington DC, there's a memorial service tomorrow at our state capitol to honor fallen officers and, and it's just a good time to remember the services and sacrifices of our law enforcement officers and our families. Mission statement is to preserve public safety and the quality of life within Minnehaha County and understand, this is a very short briefing, but the complexity and, and how big of an area our sheriff's office operates. We have our patrol and our security contracts where we have a patrol division and we serve as the local police department in every municipality in Minnehaha County with the exception of Sioux Falls and Brandon who operate their own professional departments, but we're, we're the police department in, you know, Hartford and Humboldt and Valley Springs and Colton and Crooks and Baltic and Garrett's and Del Rapids, we serve those people as well through contract services that you approve every year as part of our budgeting process. We provide security at the Air National Guard where, when you pull into the Air National Guard base, you're met by a deputy sheriff and a counterpart with the, within the guard. We provide security at the school at Southeast Tech for the college campus there and then we provide security as the airport law enforcement officer at Joe Foss Field, so that's one of our divisions. We have the investigations divisions where I have some of the most experienced investigators in the Midwest, working crimes throughout the county and working in close partnership with our state Division of Criminal Investigation and the Sioux Falls PD. They're co-located, when you walk into that detective bureau, you don't know which one's a deputy sheriff or a DCI agent or a police officer because they're all working together in, in concert. And then obviously we operate the jail, which has had a lot of attention lately and so I'm going to allow the, I'm going to have the commander of our patrol division, the commander of investigations and the commander of our jail, the warden, come up and give you a brief presentation on what they're going. I thought I just touched, and you've heard a lot about it, but what we're seeing in the Midwest with the drug trends and it's not unique to just Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, but it's something that we're really seeing an increase of. Our, our methamphetamine arrests have, have nearly doubled in the last two years. We know that methamphetamine use is, is directly tied in with our, with our crime, our, in particular, our violent crime, crimes like drug rips, robberies, murders, rapes, aggravated assaults, assaults on law enforcement officers, assaults on, on jail staff or other inmates. So meth is an issue that we're going to have to tackle head-on and I, I think the commission has been vocal on that as well. I think that you understand the issue that we're dealing with and as you see the number of meth labs, it's plummeted. I mean, we used to have twenty or thirty meth labs and now we have none. And the reason is, the supply's there, it comes from south of the border, it's readily available, so why risk blowing up yourself or your house to make the stuff when you can, when it's so readily available in our community? Two hundred percent increase in the Midwest in heroin seizures just in the last, in the last year, so we're seeing, we're seeing heroin starting to come into our community at, at higher pace than anyone would like to, but it's something that is not unique, it is something that's happening across America and synthetic substances, we're talking about drugs like fentanyl, a synthetic opioid that is devastating and deadly and even the smallest amount, amount the size of a grain of salt can cause an overdose death. This is the trend in the US right now. If you look at the trend lines, these are overdose deaths up to twenty sixteen and in fact, the overdose deaths last year, sixty-four thousand Americans died of overdoses last year. If you look at that chart, you're seeing that it's not just one drug but there are some key drugs that are really causing a lot of deaths. Synthetic opioids, again, your fentinols, your heroin and some methamphetamine. The interesting statistics on the left of the screen is, is, we're five percent of the world population but we use ninety-nine percent of the hydrocodone and eighty percent of the world's opioids. So, you know, we, we have an opioid addiction issue in our country and so when I talk about heroin and methamphetamine, this is something that we're seeing not only in the Midwest but across the nation and it's impacting crime in our nation and it's impacting the safety of our communities. It's impacting moms and dads and sisters and brothers of our overdose victims when in twenty sixteen we had eleven overdose deaths just in Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County and last year we had twenty-one. Now, those are divided up, seven meth, seven heroin, seven that were opioids or other drugs of abuse, so, you know, that's trending the same way as the other, the other national average that I showed you, so this is some of the stuff that we've been talking about as a community that we, we need to address and it's impacting our operations. One of the things, you know, we're doing a lot of different things, one of the things that we just implemented on the sheriff's office, we're working with the city police department, city fire, city health and state health and the, and the state DCI is the OD map. And what it is, it's actually like an app on the phone. My officers now, when they go to an overdose, if they're going to go to an overdose call, my officers will enter whether it was a fatal or a non-fatal overdose, they'll enter whether there was naloxone used or not, was it used once, was it used multiple times? And that's all the information that goes in, that and the location and it probably takes less than thirty seconds to enter that information, but it goes into a real-time map that we can pull up and monitor what's going on in our community. This is at zero cost to us and we've had a great discussions with city health and the police and fire departments here. Brandon Police Department is on board with this as well, so this is something that's going to allow us as decision-makers not only to report it but it's got a great tracking application that we're going to be able to see, hopefully, you know, recognize if there's hotspots, what are the drugs that are being used and, and what are the dangers that we face. The interesting thing about my access level and the one that the police chief will have and the fire chief and the health department is that you can, you can zoom in on these other communities that are suffering the same issue and really get it, an idea of what they're dealing with. Like when I pulled it up yesterday, I think there were forty-four overdoses so far that day when I pulled it up within the reporting agencies. So what we're really looking for is when this expands into Minneapolis, Omaha, we really like to track and see what they're doing in their drug market because it reflects so much on what we're likely to see and what kind of market there is and what kind of overdose situations we're dealing with. So, that's just one of the things that we're, that we're dealing with, so obviously has a big impact on us. So with that, I'm going to have Captain Mike Walsh, who commands our uniform services, our patrol division, get up and talk a little bit about what they're seeing.
Morning Commissioners, Mike Walsh.
Hi.
Still very proud to serve as the patrol division commander within the sheriff's office. In the last, in the last year, we have, we've maintained our contract hours with all of the communities. I think if you remember, we upped the hours a little bit in Hartford, we were able to cover that with the current staff, our staff is pretty stable right now and we haven't, we, we haven't seen a, a need for any necessary changes in the amount of staff we've had. I can foresee if some of the other, some of the other towns decide to up their hours, we may need some, but at this point, we're sitting pretty good. That bottom point, the continuous recruit training cycle, when I, when I first came on as the patrol commander, we, we were pretty short of people, I think we were ten, ten deputies down. We're back up, we're, we, almost where we need to be but we've been in continuous training, that means we've had people in field training ever since I've been the patrol division commander. And it, it's not due to anything, anything bad, it's just that with retirements and people leaving, we've need, need to hire more people. The training's going well, we have, we have three in-field training this week, we'll start another one next week, we've got a few more starting in August, I believe, but even with those slight shortages in people, we've been able to maintain our call volume and maintain our contract hours. Air guard security, Ms. Dever was up here earlier talking about the change in hours and how that's going to affect, a few years ago it was changed to an eight-hour shift, it's going back to a twelve-hour shift, the air guard wanted that and our deputies wanted that, simply because it's easier on families, but more importantly, it helps them put more staff on all at once, instead of three shifts of eight people, there are two shifts of twelve and so that increases the amount of people that are on shift per, per day. There were a few incidents out there this past year that were concerning, in the span of two days, we had what we thought might have been a few probing incidents and the staff out there handled it exceedingly well, including the air guard staff and, and the deputy sheriffs. And those, those incidents have stopped. Sometimes staffing's difficult but that's due to promotions and that's not a bad thing because some guys, some guys want to promote and go to the field division and we've promoted a couple to deputy sheriff for the patrol division. And so getting, getting more people out there at times can be difficult, but within that, we have a real strong core of about eight or nine guys that have been out there for a long time, really know the job, have great relationships with the military out there and it's a, it remains one of our stronger divisions. I think you know Keith Winnia comes here fairly often, he's, he's a, an exceptional supervisor, does a great job with his staff and a great job keeping us up to date back at the, back at the office. The airports, as you know, we took it over in October and it's gone really well. There were, there have been a number of incidents out there, they're far busier than I thought, ever thought they would be, but every day they're, they're dealing with something out there and they're doing really well to the point where the air marshal has called me a couple times to say how well that these deputies have done, whether it's disruptive passengers, whether it's people using the B-word bomb in the airport, which you can't do, otherwise you get in trouble. And each time, the deputies have done an exceptional job out there. It's still covered by part-time but they're all professional law enforcement officers with other agencies, they just do a fantastic job out there. We have no issue staffing that. And then Southeast Tech, we have our two, our two full-time guys out there, they act more like school resource officers, they're there for the students, the students all know them. The, the conversations I've had with the vice president out there, they really enjoy having them there and they enjoy having the access to the students. In fact, during the summer, they're going to have fifty-one students living out there, which is unusual for a summertime term, but because our, both of our officers work the type of hours they do, they'll be able to provide services to those students and that was one of the points that the vice president had made to me about how much they appreciate us out there. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Officer Walsh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing up Jason Gierman, Jason commands our investigations divisions, has considerable experience with the sheriff's office and, and as I pointed out, manages a group of some of the top investigators in the Midwest.
Hi, Captain Jason Gierman with the Investigations Division. I'm not going to hit on a lot of things here because, you know, a lot of our, our work is, is narcotics-based right now with the property crimes, but what we try to do is have everybody specialize in some sort of specialty within the Investigations Division and what we're seeing is a need in the future for electronics, phone orders, we have a ICAC division that is supposed to be mainly internet crimes against children but he kind of double duties as our technical guy, our phone guy, so we're seeing a need in that in the future. And then the, one of the, the things that kind of struck me was the Civil Division, which I'm also in charge of along with the Warrant Division, but we're seeing a huge increase in lockouts and evictions. And these are forceful evictions where it, it takes two to three officers at a time and it's got to be scheduled ahead of time so our patrol division doesn't get involved with this because they're responding to calls, so in the future, we're going to, it seems to be higher, getting higher each year and I don't know the reason for that, but it's, it's kind of alarming on how many, they're doing about one, one, about one a day, it's about thirty a month, so they might get five or six in a day and that's what they do all day, but that's all I have, if there's any questions about that.
Any questions for Jason? Any questions for Jason? Thank you.
Bring Warden Gromer up.
Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. Where are we at here? We'll skip over to the next one. Your shirt, dress down. There we go. We'll talk about the twenty-four-seven program first. I think most of you are fairly aware of the twenty-four-seven program and what it does. It's very successful for starters. That program over the years has helped a lot of people stay out of jail, out of custody, and helped them resolve some of their problems with alcohol abuse. Over the, between two thousand eight and, it's on the slide, but between two thousand eight and two thousand seventeen, the number of arrests for third and fourth offenses on D W I has been reduced throughout the state. The RAND study that was published also indicated a forty-nine percent less likely to reoffend during their first year of the program. A lot of the participants of the program really kinda reinforced that. They'll tell you that that twenty-four-seven program helps them to maintain a level of sobriety beyond what they could've done for themselves. It's very successful. The next slide, you can see there's a substantial number of people on the program. We currently have about three hundred and one testing on the PBTs twice a day. SCRAM, which is the Alcohol Ankle Monitor, Ankle Bracelet, monitors alcohol on the ankle bracelet. There's a substantial number of people on that program. Interlock and Drug Patch don't have quite as many participants, but they also monitor alcohol and drug use. And then the UA portion of twenty-four-seven, we've seen an increase in. With that comes some adjustments or problems with the twenty-four-seven program. The increased use of the UA compared to a decrease in the use of the PBTs does cause us some concerns with revenue in the twenty-four-seven program. With the PBTs, that's each participant tests twice a day. UA participation ranges from three times a week down to once or twice a month. So, where those PBT participants you see on the screen there, that's three hundred and one of them twice a day. With the UAs, that's a lot more hit and miss, so it's not that regular stream, which has caused some of the revenues in twenty-four-seven to decline over the last few years. With that comes an increase in testing supplies and just increased costs with the twenty-four-seven program, so we can see our budget really tightening on that.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, what is PBT?
Oh, I'm sorry, portable breath test.
Okay.
That's the alcohol, handheld alcohol sensor where they blow through the tube.
And I'm gonna make a comment too, and that is that we are not in the business of making money on this, when you say that we're, our revenues decreased. And I'm not criticizing what you're saying, but I just want people to know that we're not trying to make money on twenty-four-seven.
No, what we try to do with twenty-four-seven is maintain a budget-neutral situation where the twenty-four-seven program pays for itself. There was a, a few years where we had some surplus, and that money is kept in a separate account that's reserved strictly for twenty-four-seven. So, then in years where we're short, we can take from that to balance that twenty-four-seven budget in itself. What we're seeing now is, is that we're getting very close to being consistently upside-down in that, so it's not revenue-neutral. We're spending more money on the twenty-four-seven program than what we bring in. That being said, there's a tremendous benefit for the twenty-four-seven program. So, I, it's not a dollars and cents conversation totally, but the, the twenty-four-seven program has some huge benefits, both, both for the participants as well as for the county and as well as for the jail. A substantial number of those participants without that program would be in jail for one reason or another. So, that's a substantial number of people that are not in jail and are productive in the community as opposed to taking up beds in the jail. When we look specifically at the jail, our inmate numbers remain high. Through the early portion of twenty-eighteen, we've seen a slight reduction, but when we look at that over the three years, we're fairly consistent with where our numbers have been. In twenty-sixteen, through the first four months of the year, we had an average daily population of four hundred and six inmates. Last year was very high. We had an average daily population for that first four months of four seventy-six, and this year, we're running at about four hundred and forty-seven. So, with the average between those three, we're still about five inmates ahead of that average. With that, maintaining an average number of inmates on a daily basis, our bookings or our intakes into jail continue to increase. We've been increasing about three hundred, well, this, I just looked at the first four months of the year for this conversation. So, in twenty-sixteen, for the first four months of the year, we booked in sixty-five-hundred inmates. In twenty-seventeen, it was sixty-eight, and so far this year, we've booked in seventy-one-hundred. So, those numbers of intakes continues to increase even though the population is maintaining at a average level where we've seen. Obviously, with the jail, there, it's a very labor-intensive process, staffing, and I think you guys are all aware that staffing continues to be one of the things we spend a lot of time working on. Over the last seven years, we've averaged turning over about twenty-seven employees a year. A lot of that is through promotions, a lot of people that start working in the jail, their goals are to move on into a patrol position or investigative position. I can't really fault them for that, that's how I started my career, so. But we, jails are just notoriously high. Corrections in general is a notoriously high turnover profession, and we're kinda consistent what we've seen with that. Our turnover ranges between thirteen and twenty-five percent for a given year. Our contracts between our medical service, food service providers, those contracts remain strong. Our medical department sees a tremendous amount of patients on any given day. The population of the jail generally is not particularly healthy. They come in with a lot of health problems, a lot of mental health problems, and that requires some fairly hands-on medical, medical activity in that. And the, our contract with Armor Correctional Healthcare, they're doing very well at this point in the contract, and that's running fairly smoothly. We continue to contract with C B M for our food service. That's been a longstanding contract, that one runs very well. And then we've got the jail expansion. It's scheduled to start later this summer. That'll be adding three hundred and twenty-five or so beds to the current facility, which will allow us to move the inmates from the correction center downtown here. Us in the jail division are very much looking forward to doing that. It will help us more efficiently, more safely, more security for the whole operation as opposed to trying to operate two facilities with the one being a minimum-security facility that was originally designed to handle work release. What we've seen over the years is that work release population is dramatically reducing from what it was. It's a very dramatic reduction. Part of that is the twenty-four-seven program and the other programs that have been developed and implemented that allow those, some of those folks to be monitored in a way other than that work release program. Once we, as we do continue to move through the, into the new jail, we'll see as that fills up, we're gonna have some, some more staffing concerns, and I'll be coming to you with staffing requests for that, to staff the new jail. That is about all I have for the jail, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the warden? You're off the hook.
So, to wrap up, I, I wanna have one bright thing on the horizon because I know I gave you some startling numbers and some maybe depressing facts, but the reality is, the, the drug is really, the drug use in our community, the overdoses, the, the crimes related and driven by, that have a drug nexus are really concerning. And so efforts to try to get that head on, hit that head on are, are really important to all of us in the community to keep our community safe. One of those bright things on the horizon is our Triage Center concept. What I really like about that is the fact that it is a partnership with the city, the county, the state, our healthcare providers, our treatment providers, our prevention people, and it's not just one entity that's responsible for it. And that's an opportunity, and I've heard from all of those, all of the people that we're talking about, all those that I, that I described there, there's not one of them that's not interested in trying to provide a better entry point or an early entry point or an early intercept point for people who have addiction issues in our community or mental health issues. And I see this Triage Center as, as something on the horizon that, you know, I look forward to the day that a police officer or an ambulance or a firefighter or a, a parent could bring someone to a Triage Center and triage them after being evaluated by a registered nurse, triage them to the services that they need, whether that's treatment for mental health issues, whether it's day reporting, whether it's to be able to keep somebody on their mental health medication, whether it's detox services or a sobering center, or, you know, some of the other mental health issues that we deal with. The high utilizers of our jail and our hospitals, you know, focusing on them having intercept points where we can intercept in their lives and try to get them help, having warm handoffs so that when we do use naloxone on a heroin overdose victim, that something happens after that other than sending them down the road because they're gonna go take their heroin again. So, we have to have a way, the same way with meth, we have to have a, a place to hand them off to say, "Look, you have a serious issue in your life, we need to, we need to manage, manage you until you can get, get off this habit, because if you're on meth, you're gonna be, you know, you're gonna be getting a gun, and then you're gonna create a robbery, you're gonna commit a robbery or something." So, I mean, this Triage Center for me is just really a, a bright opportunity to engage everybody in our community, and I appreciate the commission's support of this and leadership in it, in fact, and then all of our partners that are working on it. So, that's the wrap-up of the sheriff's office briefing. Commissioner, I'll, I'll take any questions, and if you have hard ones, Chief Deputy Boyd is in the back there.
Any questions for the Sheriff Commissioner Barth?
I just have a question for the sheriff. One of the things we continue to hear a little bit about is the lack of education in the schools about some of the problems that we're facing. Is there an opportunity when the Triage Center becomes a reality to get education to those students through that system, if you will? Because I can remember way back when, when drunk driving was such a big and still is a concern, and we as school people had the experience of seeing what happens with a drunk driver. Is there a possibility to do that kind of thing with a Triage Center?
I, I don't see it as part of the Triage Center, but I see, you know, I've been shouting from the mountaintop about prevention and that there, we've lost that, you know, there's not nearly the level of, of prevention out there for the drugs and alcohol, in particular the drugs that we're seeing targeting, you know, opioids, fentanyl, and, and, you know, heroin and meth. I can't drive very far in my car listening to the radio without hearing a texting or a sobriety saturation patrol commercial, but I don't hear anything about what we're facing with meth and heroin in our community, and I think we should. And what happened though is the federal dollars went away, the local dollars went away. You know, I, I, I credit the, this county for continuing to support our school resource officers in our schools, where we continue at the sheriff's office to provide the dare, the dare program to young people. The other thing about prevention as well, though, I think that, to answer your question too, is you look at the average age of our overdose death victims is forty-three. So, we have to get that prevention method not only to our young, young kids, but we have to get them to the people who are in their twenties and thirties and forties and fifties, because they don't understand that you can't just try out heroin. You don't just try out meth. You use it, you're addicted, and then you're gonna be a problem for your family, you're gonna be high-risk to your, your kids, you're gonna, I mean, the state's attorney's here, but he could speak to the, the number of drug-endangered kids that we're dealing with where parents just totally neglect their kids because they're so, so focused on just needing to get another fix of meth. So, you know, it's, the prevention thing, I agree with, but I think we have to broaden our horizon and not only increase it in our schools, but also for our, for our adults population.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, thank you, Sheriff, and, you know, every county employee should be proud of the work they do serving our community, and none should be more proud than those serving in law enforcement. I, I really appreciate the efforts that your team does, and it's, it's been great to meet them. I'm glad that when you were two, you decided to spend a day as a law enforcement officer and have spent many, many days as a law enforcement officer, and finally let me say, I can't believe you're younger than me.
And I would like to say too, you know, this is National Police Week or National Law Enforcement Week, and so thank you to those of you who serve, and Mr. Major said, you know, "We're all happy that you're here, we don't like to see you coming," but I would say add to that, that we are so thankful that you came, because if you're out there and you're in an accident or if you have a crime, or we always know that you're coming and that you will be there, and even if we don't want you there because of what happened, we're glad that you're there to support us.
Thank you.
Usually with a huge helping hand, so, thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And next, we have a brief presentation on the Marcy's Law Proposed Changes by Mr. McGowan and also Mr., the sheriff. We'll get to come right back.
I'll give you one, I just wanna talk real, really briefly about the Marcy's Law impact on our operations. Obviously, you know, we, we've had to adjust the way we do our business with the, with the version and the interpretation of Marcy's Law that was put into our constitution. And, and I will tell you that I am a strong supporter of victims' rights. I think that that's key, and I think that was the intent of Marcy's Law. I think we, we had a lot of conversations over the last year about are there things that could improve upon the Marcy's Law, and, and as a result, working with Speaker Mickelson, working with other members of the legislature, other sheriffs, state's attorneys, and, and our, our victim advocates. We were able to, to, I, I think, come to a consensus that there was some, some wording changes that could actually strengthen Marcy's Law and maybe clear up some of the issues that we struggle with. And so Amendment Y is, is gonna be before, before the voters right here in the, in the, at the primary election date in June. And, and my, my personal thought is that I think that's gonna help strengthen the law and, and clear up some of the issues. In particular, one of the ones that I struggle with is based on the interpretation of the laws that pass, you know, you don't, the public doesn't have really access to the information that they used to as easily as they used to, and an example would be the location of a crime. You know, we use the eyes and ears of the citizens as a very valuable way to catch offenders that commit a robbery, for example. Well, if we're not putting out the name of the business that a robbery occurred at, the people who were driving by that business when it occurred that would be able to go, "Hey, I remember, you know, you know, it was that Johnny's Convenience Store, I, I saw a car pull out of there, it was the one with California plates, it was a black Mustang." Well, they don't know that because instead of getting the, that it was a Johnny's Convenience Store, you're getting it was in the whatever hundred block of this community, and it, and it impacts our ability to quickly solve some of these crimes. So, one of the things that Amendment Y does is it clears that up, that we can put locations of businesses when, when, you know, crime has just occurred. And, and, you know, the other thing for me is, I know the volume that the victim witness assistants are going through and dealing with, and I don't know that that, that, I don't think this amendment Y makes that go away, but my belief is, it will allow them to focus more on the victims that want that protection, that want that help. I think, I think people really wanna make sure that the victims of serious crimes, domestic abuse, rape, robbery, that, that they are protected, their information's protected, and they're made well-aware of every step in the court. It becomes more problematic on very minor crimes, especially when there's a mult, multiple victims of property crimes and things, and, and I'll let Aaron speak to that, but that's kinda been the impact of, of Marcy's Law on us, and, and, and I see some strengthening of the law as a, as a possibility with Amendment Y, or maybe the voters will say, "No, we're gonna leave it the way it is," that'll be their choice, so. Aaron?
Thank you, Sheriff. Morning Commissioners, Aaron McGowan, Minnetonka County State's Attorney. I'd just like to echo what Sheriff Milstead said. You know, in a perfect world, this would not have been a constitutional amendment. It would've been my preference that they would've gone into the legislature through committee. We've had a Crime Victims Act for over twenty years on the books. If it needed updates, I think that would've been a more appropriate way to do that. Or had they come to us to look at the language that they were using in the constitutional amendment before they got the signatures, that would've been helpful. When this all first started, as you recall, there was a statewide Marcy's Law Task Force that Attorney General Marty Jackley spearheaded, and there were a lot of really smart people across the state law enforcement that had different interpretations of what this amendment meant. And another problem with this was that as soon as that election was certified, this became our constitution, and we had to adapt to it within like ten days of knowing that it was passing, so we had to move very quickly to be in compliance with this amendment. Since that- quickly to be in compliance with this amendment. Uh, since that time, we have adapted the best we could. I appreciate the commission recognizing the additional responsibilities of our office through this amendment, and allowing us to ha- have the appropriate staff to be compliant. Uh, I also appreciate Speaker Mickelson in bringing this group together to come to a compromise with, uh, the Amendment Y, and it, as the sheriff said, it does do some positive things for us. It does not relieve us of all the additional responsibilities through the initial amendment, but it does make some important clarifications, uh, where there was a lot of ambiguous language in the initial amendment that a lot of people were disagreeing on. It does make those, uh, clarifications as far as it being a opt-in as opposed to an opt-out measure, that may have some impact on our office. Uh, clarifying that law enforcement can, uh, give out information to help solve crimes, that's very helpful to law enforcement, and a very important piece to this, uh, compromise. It does relieve a, a lot of actors at, at the county and state level of liability if they are not compliant with this, uh, amendment. So there are a lot of positives, and I absolutely do support this amendment. Uh, we, we are smart enough to know that we're not gonna come in and repeal, uh, Marcy's Law. We don't have the resources to do it, it's hard to, as law enforcement, be against a crime, uh, a victim, crime victims' measure, uh, but it was not the philosophy that we disagreed with, it was, uh, the unintended consequences of that amendment that we, uh, found to be problematic. We know that we can't repeal it, this is a way that we can make some, uh, some really smart fixes on this measure, and make those clarifications, uh, to everybody's benefit. I agree with what the sheriff said, it's not gonna have a huge financial impact at the county level. I think it was maybe sold, uh, that way through the legislature. It does not change the, the broadened definition of what a victim is. We still have to staff those property crimes, anything where there's a financial loss, psychological impact, or, uh, a violent crime where there's a victim. We still have to, uh, staff those cases where there's a victim of a petty theft second or vandalism, or if we have a spree of twenty car break-ins, we still have to, uh, fulfill those responsibilities. So it doesn't change a lot of the additional responsibilities, but those important clarifications will be helpful as we move forward. So I do, uh, support this measure, and would hap- be happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Any questions for Aaron at this point? Commissioner Bender?
Aaron, is it true, it's my understanding that the original proponents of Marcy's Law are supportive of, of Amendment Y, and are assisting in, um, trying to get the word out about what those changes do?
Commissioner, that's a good question, and they are, everybody really came together, uh, legislative leadership, the Sheriff's Association, State's Attorneys Association, and the Marcy's Law folks, were all at the table and helped develop this compromise, and they are actually funding, uh, to pass this me- this measure. They are doing, uh, funding through the media and other sources, so they are very supportive of these changes.
Commissioner Karski?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, new precedent here with putting a, an amendment on a primary budget, it hasn't been done before, and that just kinda highlights the importance of getting this done and getting this fix in. It supports law enforcement, it supports your office, it supports victims' rights, um, so, just a great reason to vote in the June primary ballot, even if you don't think you have a candidate in a race, it's just a, a great reason to get out there and vote.
That's a good point.
Additional comments?
Thank you, Aaron, for bringing that forward, and I guess we just encourage people to vote yes on Y. Y, yes? And, um, Minnehaw County did approve three positions for Aaron's office on the budget season, and I don't think those people will be going away, or those positions in the future, because we have expanded or changed a little bit how we're doing victims' protection, and that is extremely important. Associated Press did an article that was in the paper, I believe, yesterday, um, and they said Pennington County, I believe, had hired four people when we had hired three, and I believe those will probably all be staying, 'cause it is important to, we just wanna make that, drill down on how important it is to take care of the victims that need help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item number twelve, this is, um, consider an appeal of the deci- decision by the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve Conditional Use Permit Number eighteen dash twenty-two to allow the telecommunications tower on the property legally descri- described as tract one Bundy Edition, southeast one quarter, northeast one quarter, and east one half, northeast one fourth, accept the Valley View Farm Edition, and accept lots H dash one, and the east fortieth west one half, northeast one quarter section, thirteen township one oh three, north range fifty-one west. Kevin, I'm getting better.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, um, from the County Planning Department. Uh, as the legal description is described, uh, for Conditional Use Permit eighteen twenty-three for a telecommunications tower, the property is located approximately one and a quarter miles west of the Village of Lyons, and one and a quarter miles east of Tri Valley High School, um, as seen in the map here. Uh, the petitioner is requesting to construct a hundred and ninety-foot monopole tower for cellular tower use. Uh, this, uh, use in the county, uh, is listed as a permitted special use in the zoning ordinance, uh, and if it meets all the conditions, it would be able to be constructed with, without a public hearing, uh, but since it did not meet condition, uh, the requirement in section twelve twelve C three, that it's a minimum distance of three miles from the nearest tower, uh, it had to have a Conditional Use Permit hearing. Um, the, uh, the, the project does meet all the other requirements of the ordinance, uh, as written. Uh, the location of the property, as I noted, is near Lyons, uh, and is surrounded primarily around cropland. Uh, the three nearest dwellings, let's see if I can maybe, or the, kind of in that cutout area on that section, uh, are all related to the, uh, property owner, uh, and they all have signed waivers in order to, to allow the, the setbacks from the nearest dwelling to be nearer to them. And on the next map, uh, north is on the left side of the screen, uh, you'll see that the petitioner has set back the tower away from the road so that it meets the, the required setback from the nearest dwelling, um, to the north of the property. The proposed site, this is a little bit closer up, uh, does show that they will have a fence, uh, eneavements on the property, and support structure to support the tower. Uh, the structure will have, uh, room for co-location, so in the future, there may be more support structures, uh, if another entity wants to rent space on the tower. Uh, and as, this is a conditional use, I'll just briefly cover a couple of the conditional use permit criteria that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the effect upon the use enjoyment of the property in the immediate facility, uh, vicinity, uh, and the use is already permitted upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Uh, the, this is surrounded primarily by agricultural land, uh, and its proximity to Lyons and Tri Valley was noted as a reason for placing the tower in this location. Uh, the tower does not need safety lights, uh, as it is lower than two hundred feet, so they will not, uh, need any flashing light at the top to meet the FAA requirements for, uh, airports or airplanes. Uh, and then the increased coverage, uh, may actually be a positive change for the area for, uh, development of communications for Lyons and the surrounding area. Uh, the petitioner may be able to, uh, answer some questions about the coverage and why they're doing it in this location as well. Uh, the measures are being taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting. Uh, this, uh, proposed use shouldn't produce any significant odors, fumes, dusts, and noise or vibration in its regular use, and as discussed, it will not have the FAA lighting. Uh, there may be a security light on the property, and if there is, um, it should be pointed downward as to not, uh, spill over into other property. Um, and then the health, safety, general welfare of the public in the, in the comprehensive plan, uh, the, the day-to-day operations of this, uh, proposed land use should have minimal effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, as there will be very little traffic coming in and out of it, except for the occasional, uh, maintenance vehicle that'll, uh, visit the site. Uh, the proposed structure is located, uh, tha- over a thousand feet from the nearest dwelling, and that would be the nearest dwelling, uh, that has signed the waiver, and the other dwellings, it's located thirteen thousand feet away, or, no, excuse me, thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred feet away from the nearest dwelling. Uh, and the property has, uh, noted that they'll use reasonable safeguards, such as a six-foot-high fence to prevent vandals and climbing of the tower. Uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed this at the April twenty-third Planning Commission meeting, and at that meeting, it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Um, so I'll just go through some of the photos of the site, so you can idea of where it's located. So this, uh, picture was taken in Lyons, actually, looking toward the general direction of the tower. Uh, you'll see it kinda goes uphill, that Lyons is a, on the edge of the flood plain. Uh, and if you look at uphill, uh, it'll be right in the middle of those two groves, it'll be, uh, the tower. Uh, so then this is looking on the north side of the site, looking south to where it is, the tower will be located. It'll be located approximately in the middle of that field, um, along that fence line, you can see where the crops kind of change, uh, uh, in the middle of that line, where the property line moves. Uh, one, you know, one's a little bit browner than the other, I guess. Um, and then this is looking a little bit further to the east of where that line is, uh, that grove of trees is the closest, uh, dwellings in the, near the property, and as stated, they have signed waivers to have the tower located there. And then this is looking directly east, um, from kind of where a driveway is located, where I'm standing, uh, and you can see the grove of trees. Next picture looks the nearest house on the other side of that grove of trees. Um, and I believe the, uh, individual who lives in this house is here, so, um, they'll be able to state any concerns. Uh, with that, the, uh, County Commission, uh, can take this item and uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission approval decision for Conditional Use Permit eighteen twenty-three, and I will take any questions.
Any questions for Kevin at this point? Thanks Kevin. We will start with Verizon, and let them, if they would like to say anything in support of this project, and then we will go to the, the other, the people that are opposed to it.
Good morning. Uh, thank you Commissioners for having us here. Uh, my name is Kurt Walter, I do represent Verizon Wireless on this project here. Um, a couple of items that came up, um, during the planning, uh, meeting last month, um, concerns about the neighbors. Uh, what we're looking to do is, um, work with the county. Uh, Minnehaw County has established restrictions that, um, are in place that protect the neighboring properties, you know, for cell towers, pretty much everything that you guys do. Um, the setbacks from any neighboring houses are thirteen hundred feet. Uh, we've, we've gone a little bit extra for that, um, we're thirteen hundred feet from the right-of-way, so we're probably fourteen-plus hundred feet from the next nearest house, and then probably fifteen hundred feet, um, from the other neighbor. Uh, I think both of them are here today. Um, other counties surrounding, or you, I think Lincoln County has a setback of about six hundred feet, so you protect, you already protect the neighbors more. Uh, McCook County has three hundred feet. Um, so we believe that we're doing what we can to make sure that, uh, we're not really adversely affecting any other neighboring properties. Uh, this particular tower, this location was chosen, what we're trying to do here, um, this is not a coverage tower, is what you're probably used to in the past, this is, what we're doing lately is pretty much all capacity throughout the upper Midwest. Um, the usage of smartphones in homes, businesses, schools, has increased exponentially, and, uh, all of our, all of our projects, all our locations are becoming full, and we can't have any much more traffic on it, so we're building new facilities to handle that traffic. Um, this location was chosen to handle, um, Tri Valley School and Lyons at the same time. Uh, this location is right in the middle, and it, and it, it covers both of them very well, and it takes the traffic off of other towers and, and surrounding neighbors. Um, there is a cello tower, mile and a half north. Um, we've looked at that one, see if we can co-locate on that. Uh, that puts us over two miles from, from both of the other sites that we're trying to cover, just doesn't give us the coverage in-building that we need, um, so it, it doesn't fit our needs at all. Um, what this tower is, is it's gonna be under two hundred feet, so we won't need lighting, won't, won't be, you know, once after dark, you won't be able to see it at all. And, uh, we, we abide by all federal safety and construction regulations. Um, the industry itself, uh, if you can see the handouts that I've, I've presented, um, more and more homeowners are looking to wireless coverage as one of the most important things, especially the younger generations. Um, the increasing number of people in younger generations rely solely on wireless facilities and wireless communications. Um, some of the anecdotal evidence we have, is there are dozens of towers existing already in your, in Minnehaw County, and especially in the city of Sioux Falls. Uh, they're, we're not aware of any evidence that there's been any harmful health effects on any of these. Um, there has been no evidence that there's any lower property values, or any evidence of adverse lightning strikes. So, I'm sure you guys have towers, so I would be here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Okay, thank you Kurt. Is there any questions for Mr. Walters? Okay, I have the opportunity to comment back, if you would like to, you'll have to come up and give your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Jay Huesman, at four six five six two, two hundred and fifty-second Colton. Is there any way that could be turned on, I got?
Yep.
Otherwise I'm gonna have to walk up there like a weatherman and point.
Point on the map.
But I'd talk loud, if that would be better. I'm gonna start off with the one that, uh, hopefully works for me, in case you say I'm out of time. Anyway, the, okay, that's my deck I just built, with the pool beside it, and if you look right out, straight out is where that tower's gonna be.
You can put your finger on the map.
The tower's gonna be just in this little bit of a lull.
Okay.
And then this, is the walkout, this tower's gonna be out here across the road, so that's facing, all three bedrooms are here, and they say you're better off at night, you know, while you're sleeping, you're more susceptible to radiation. My wife's got MS, so she's already got low immune system. Okay, tower'd be right here. This would be Bundy's. You notice they got all the groves of trees, that's in their backyard. It's in our front yard. This is all floodland plain. This is wetland, that's a pond. There's a bald eagle there, there's a prane there, there's geese, there's ducks, and their flight pattern goes right over here into the habitat down here. Now there's Bald Eagle Act. Says right here in the, uh, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Tower should not be in or near wetlands or other known concentrated areas. The Communication Tower Working Group would make them place a net above the ground to catch any birds, so that they could study what had been killed by the tower strikes. And, you got FCC in there, you got Department of Interior, you got NEPA, you got PEA, all that's gotta pass. And, uh, south of me is a bridge that they moved around to save some fish. I poll hibernators, and if you go by crooks, they put in a box culvert, they move the power lines out in the field and back in to protect some fish, and then I heard yesterday that they built, had to build a bridge, they couldn't do a box culvert to protect the fish. Why aren't we protecting these birds? The bees, the bees are gone by any cell tower, bats are gone, I've got bats, sparrows are gone, they're all, they all disappear. There won't be a s- There won't be a songbird left in the area. And that, you can look that up, I mean, you see that time and time again, but... The real downfall is the, where they want to put that driveway. Anybody travels three miles south of Lyons to Tri-Valley School knows you don't even dare reach over and change the radio station because you're over a hill and bang. They want to put one approach right next to another one. So that's just, you know, if some car gets caught in the first one, he's gonna end up nosediving in the next one. The farmer won't even use that existing approach. He uses the one further to the west because even in a high-profile tractor, he can't see what's coming over the crest of that hill. Oh, and then I did see a lawsuit, one against a tower company for one-point-two for invasion of privacy. When the guy's on his tower doing his maintenance, he's gonna be looking right on my deck and in my pool. I'm gonna have the noise of the construction, I'm gonna have the noise of the generator. And as far as property values, if I don't want it there, I sure wouldn't go buy this place. So you can't tell me it ain't hurting property values. Otherwise I wouldn't be here today. And that's why people protest against it, they won't buy it either. We're, we need to get Facebook into the school. Well, in respect for you, my cellphone's in the car. Shouldn't respect for the teachers' cellphone be in the car. There's already property bought to build a new school, to take the pressure off of that Tri-Valley. Twenty acres somewhere by Crooks, so you're gonna lose half the enrollment there. Do we need a tower for five-hundred people, and how many are in Lyons? Two-hundred? There's no, you can't call out of certain wooden structures in Baltic at all. And if this tower is gonna take some pressure off of these others, why isn't it not moved up to that Kellow Land? That's closer to Colton, that's closer to Baltic. You can't tell me, two miles away, you can't shove a signal in a building. It's not gonna go in a building. If you see an eye on Kellow Land on four-twenty-six, Sioux Falls schools have trouble getting a signal in their schools. You can't push it into certain buildings. So there's plenty of other places they need to be, and I don't know what, what kind of racket's going on in this deal, but it doesn't need to be there at all. That's all I can think of right now, I've kind of worked up.
Any questions for Mr. Hausman? Okay. Do you want to speak, Christine?
I'm Chris Christensen, I live at four-six-five-eight-zero, two-hundred-and-fifty-second Street. The blue house that he showed would be mine. Can I, will this work on my cellphone?
Yes.
Turn it the other. Yeah, there you go, turn it.
That's from my yard, behind is the field, straight looking out my living room window, the tower will be straight out my living room window. I will be looking at it, it is thirteen-hundred feet out my living room window. I own twenty-four acres there. I love agricultural land. Did not buy twenty-four acres to look at a cell tower. This morning I went out and filmed traffic. And coming up the hill, this is right across where the driveway will go. I have approximately eight buses that go by, and the kids come from two directions to get to the school. Where the driver will be will be at the top of this hill where they're coming up. I have been almost hit several times coming on my driveway because you cannot see them coming up here. Every year I have kids into my fence of my field, because my field travels along there, and that is not in bad weather. Last year, two years ago, on the last day of school, dry pavement, I had a child in my fence. And usually I have to repair my fence almost every year because of kids. Y'all know how kids drive. They have to pass the bus if they're coming from, plus it's not even traffic that way. It's the parents coming back going the other way at the same time, too. Today, I want you to keep in mind, this doesn't look that busy, but the seniors have graduated already, and the high school students are taking tests, which means they don't, they can go and come throughout the day. So this is very light traffic to what it would be when school is in full session, before school and after school. And it only takes one accident to kill a child and one vehicle self-repair pulling out of there. There are other options. A few years ago, I believe it was three years ago, there is an elevator built down by Lyons where they own the majority of the land around them, that it is already a commercial that they could look into, I believe, in putting a cell tower there and not destroying more of the countryside view and what we enjoy of our view. We already have the noise as far as our property taxes. We've already had the railroad impact. We're a mile away, that seems like a long ways, but you can hear perfectly when the train comes to town. It came last night to my house. And they load all night long, and you hear cars banging. We already have that, if we want to sell our property, we already have that fight that we have a railroad that loads all night long and clangs all night long. The adverse visual effect on our property, if we would like to sell this, I believe would damage us with the cell tower right outside our door. As far as health concerns, I printed out a report that Jeremy Johnson, that went to school, at South Dakota School of Mines, he wrote on this, he has a BS and an MS in civil engineering. And he, and this is from 2016, and it was an article published in The Bent, which is a magazine for the National Engineering Honor Society. And in here, it is proven that the electromagnetic fields do affect health. And I understand there are cell towers everywhere, but I don't have a cell tower by my house. I have not signed up for the effects of a cell tower. And it has been proven that it, the biological effects of the electromagnetic fields, the damages include sperm damage, nervous system disruption, headaches, insomnia, tendonitis, difficulty concentrating, and fatigue. And I choose not to sign up for this. The health dangers that he has in here, I can certainly give you this report if you would like. And it, it gives you the scientist that did this study, and that it is proven to be true, that there is a negative effect from cell towers. So, but one of my largest concerns besides health is the safety of these kids going to school. And like I said, it only takes one accident to take a child's life. And, you know, school, different things, they get, you can't necessarily plan. School gets out early, it gets out because of a storm. You know, I don't know how they would schedule, and there's different things. The traffic for different sports up at the school. Right now, their parking lot is full for wrestling and football, and they're parking in the ditch down the road because their parking lot will not hold the guests coming for those different activities.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Christensen? Okay. Give Verizon a chance to rebuttal if you have anything that you want to say.
Sure, thank you again. Here we go. Can't do much. There'll be metal up in the air. Can't really hide that. But what we do have, we're more than a quarter mile away from either one of these houses that these two people are concerned with. We can't do much about the visual, the traffic. The only time that there will be much traffic there is during construction, when what we'll do is have somebody on the road slowing people down when a truck comes in or out. The construction period is about thirty days, and traffic is very light. Semi comes in, you know, puts concrete in the ground. A week later, you know, they bring steel. So the traffic shouldn't be any problem. We'll have somebody out there monitoring it and making everybody aware something is happening. Once the tower is up, there might be somebody there once a month with a small SUV. Flight patterns of the birds, all these things are probably true, but what, what you see is, is bird strikes on towers with the guy wires. Birds can't see the wires hanging out, they can't see the, there's comments about power lines cross, that the birds hit those. Big piece of steel, it's four feet in diameter, birds can see them. We have nests on top of these all the time. Most likely, if there's an eagle in that wetland, he'll be nesting on top of this tower. Invasion of privacy. No one's up on the top of this tower unless it's being constructed. It's really hard to see a quarter a mile into Jay's pool. We've looked at, at placing it in different locations. If we place it closer to the school, we can't cover Lyons. We'd have to build two facilities. Verizon is looking at investing half a million dollars into this project to cover anybody that uses this area. Our next nearest tower is four miles south, four and a half miles south. And it's just not covering the capacity for this area. So this is the area we need. There is a, a letter from our Verizon's RF engineer stating the reasons for this. If you need any additional questions regarding that, we can have the actual engineer come in here, explain exactly why we would need this particular site. Other than that, answer any more questions you guys might have.
Any questions for Mr. Walters? Ask, has the driveway been approved already by the Highway Department?
It has not, no. But we will have to get it approved by the Highway Department.
Approved entrance before we get to that point, so.
Yeah.
Additional questions?
I'm just curious if you're familiar at all with the article that was cited by Jeremy Johnson about the health effects?
No, I'd love to see it. I'd be interested to see how far away you have to be from a tower. There are health effects. Working on a tower, on an active antenna, you can be working on that antenna, being active, but you can't spend more than five minutes. It's basically a low-power, it's, it's a microwave. So there is also a handout of our health effects. It's a grid or graph paper. It shows this one, I don't know if you guys have that in your packets. The typical monopole facility is, is about the same effect as having a baby monitor next to you.
It's part of the PowerPoint way down there. Is there any additional questions as he's pulling that up?
If it's easier, I can do it this way.
The elbow's not on either, so, it is down there, because I've got it pulled up. Let's keep going, Travis, it's way down there.
It's way down there.
Yeah, it's way down there. There you go. Keep going, keep going. You gotta get past the health and safety letter from Verizon, too, so just pass that.
There you go.
But we have articles from the CDC, American Cancer Society states that there's nothing there. Federal government licenses these frequencies. Federal government says there's nothing there.
Okay. If you have a problem with your driveway, do you have, would you have other access? If, if, if the Highway Department says you can't put it on top of the road, will you be able to come up with a different access point?
There's an existing driveway just fifty feet or so west on the neighbor's property. I did get a call from, from that neighbor this morning. And if there's a problem with a new driveway where we're hoping to come, put it, we'll come up with something else.
Okay.
We'll make sure we work well with everybody.
Yeah, you won't have a choice.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, any additional questions? Commissioner Kurski?
One for Planning Office, Kevin. Just wanna, for the record, the CUP is strictly for a hundred-and-ninety-foot tower. They can't add additional towers without coming back or at capacity or at height or at anything else, it's strictly for this.
Yes, it is strictly for this tower as they stated it. It would be a hundred-and-ninety feet, and then they have a lightning rod on top of that. They can't add capacity, so they can co-locate other companies onto this tower if somebody else wants to with just a regular permitting process. But no, just one tower.
What's the footprint of a
I don't know, I believe it was, it was about an acre, probably not even quite.
The footprint, excuse me, the footprint of the tower itself or the compound?
The whole thing, yeah.
I think our gravel, I think it's probably seventy by seventy of gravel in the area, but that's for driveway turnaround, generator.
So less than half the size of a typical residential lot, basically.
Yeah, it's, it's not a whole lot.
Okay, okay. Comments? By me? I was just, you know, doing some reading as people were talking, and, you know, the bird strike thing. I found it interesting that they said that, the article that I read was, bird strikes are reduced if the lights are turned off on a tower. And this tower has, is not lit up at all, so that would probably remove that argument against a tower, I guess, the fact that there are no lights on here. And then I read an article by the American Cancer Society about radio frequencies and cellphone towers, and they could find nothing that would indicate a higher risk for medical based on proximity, that type of thing. Like you said, you'd have to almost be, have it on your roof and be sitting next to it in order for there to be, have it to cause any sort of health concerns from what I was able to find from the American Cancer Society. And I'm gonna count them as a reputable source that probably doesn't have a lot of skin in the game as far as whether a tower is approved or not. Based on that, I'm going to recommend approval of the Planning and Zoning's recommendation, I guess is, or lack of a better way to say it, and make the motion for approval.
You can sit down, Kevin. I have a motion to approve or uphold the Planning and zoning. I have a motion, a second, to uphold the Planning's decision. Comments? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. They will have to get a driveway. Item number thirteen is consider a motion to authorize a transfer of forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-six dollars and thirty-four cents from the twenty-four-seven sobriety expenditures to the Sheriff's Office expenditure for full-time employee salaries and benefits. Joe. Morning, Joe.
Morning, Commissioners, Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have a request to, well, first of all, I'll start off. So as you may have heard, we had one of our deputies, Steve Majeski, passed away while on duty at work. So after that, per county policy, he had his sick leave accruals paid out to his family. This is something that he's accrued over his twenty-two years of service with us. He had recently been, excuse me, assigned to the twenty-four-seven desk. So when he passed away, it was taken out of the twenty-four-seven budget, all of those twenty-some years of accruals. What we're asking for is if we could to assist with keeping the twenty-four-seven budget for twenty-four-seven purposes, instead, change the expenditure Instead, change the expenditure of his payout to the sheriff's office budget where we can handle that hit a little bit different on our end.
Additional questions?
I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Item number fourteen is brief presentation on the Multicultural Center programs and services. Kristy, here you are.
Thanks for your patience.
Yes. Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about the Multicultural Center. Um, Carrie Moat and Jay Sokup are from the board, and they're also gonna do some presentations. Um, we do have nineteen programs and services. Um, I'm gonna talk about the after-school program, and then I'm gonna turn it over to them. Um, we have, we are state licensed. We have been for seven years. Um, we have six programs in our after-school, out-of-school program time. Five of them run during the school year. One runs during the summer. We work with approximately seven hundred kids per year. All of our focus is on academics. So we take kiddos, um, we get referrals from the schools. We get, take kiddos that are behind grade level, and we work on academics. We have fun, but we work on academics. And in native count, that is a math recovery program, Froggy Reads, which is a reading recovery program. For the last two years, we've had a hundred percent of the kiddos improve in their skills. So we pick certain skills, we pre-test them, see where they are, and then we focus on them, and then we post-test them. And so for the last two years, I'm very happy to say, um, we've had a hundred percent, um, growth with these kiddos. And we do that three times a year, um, to prove the academic skills. We also work on race relations. And of course, we provide a safe place for the kiddos to come. Um, we provide all the transportation from our four schools that we work with, um, provide a healthy snack, and then we bus them home, make sure they get home safe in the door. So we follow a lot of rules and regs, but these kiddos are, know how much we care for them. Um, they, we give them that extra support because sometimes the families we work with need that. And so we're kinda like mentors besides the academic component. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Carrie, and she's gonna talk more. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, if you would identify yourself with your address, too, please.
Uh, Carrie Moat, six nineteen North Duluth Avenue in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Um, I am currently the chair at the Multicultural Center. I've been, um, on the board now for about four years. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our adult services and programs. Um, one of the ones that, uh, we just started about three years ago, there's been this need in the city for employment. Um, so it's the job skills program. We currently have, uh, of, of the, like, the last six hundred participants, we've had about three hundred and fifty of them be placed in jobs and retain their jobs for over ninety days. Um, so one of the things that we, we do is we work with them on their resumes, we work with them on applications, um, workforce culture in the United States. Um, and then we just kinda teach them basic skills or knowledge that they might need to know coming into a new position. Um, it could be, uh, language on safety or, um, you know, maybe what's appropriate at work and what's not on an ethics basis. So, uh, we work closely with a lot of different, uh, businesses here in Sioux Falls. Um, I currently work for Smithfield Foods. Um, we take as many as we possibly get, um, with their help as well. And one of the other things that we do after we get them all set up and geared up for an interview is we provide them the clothing, um, to attend that interview, too. So we have a career closet onsite. They can come and get, um, their clothing and, and head off to the interview looking confident. We also have a private contract with the Department of Labor. We've worked with them, um, with our TANF recipients and then, uh, that are in need of English classes as well. So that's one of those steps that we, we take before they get into that work, um, work, job skills program. And that's something that we partnership with the Department of Labor and STI. So, we, not only them, the TANF recipients, their referral, um, we also will take people from the community that are struggling with their English, um, get them into classes and enrolled. And then hopefully from there, when they get that basis, we'll get them into a job skills program and hopefully see employment in the near future. Um, one of the other adult programs we offer is working with, uh, tenants and landlords. Um, we will educate them on how to, um, clean their homes, operate their, um, whether it's an oven or microwave, um, what's acceptable to do within a rental. Example would maybe be taking the screens out of your windows, um, you know, or food storage. Um, so there's just been some concerns that we saw from landlords, um, in the community on, on taking care of their property when they rent to, um, certain clients of different culture. And so we work with them on making sure that there is a good communication between the landlords and the tenants and address any concerns, help any, with any concerns they might have. We also have a few adult services programs. One of those is interpreting services. Um, so most of our business right now is with the school districts, um, the county, um, court systems, uh, and then, uh, the hospitals here in town. So, we have a very high standard of the, the interpreters that we use. We want them to know, um, what's the right word, uh, the right business ethics and, best practices, thank you. Best practices when, when, especially in a, in a position where you are dealing with somebody's health or, you know, legal services, uh, we want that to be very professional. Uh, we also offer translation. So if there's documentation, like, uh, employee handbook, something like that, that a company needs help with, um, having translated, then we offer those services as well. We also have immigration services. We have a legal team on staff for people that might be having issues with their legal documents, which is also another hindrance to employment a lot of the time. So we will work with them and families on making sure that all of their documentation is up to par, um, so they can get the employment that they need. We do have some, um, community outreach programs as well. We work closely with the, the Sioux Falls Police Department and go out into the community, into these different ethnic communities, and work with them on breaking down some of the barriers between law enforcement and, um, uh, the different ethnic cultures. Where they've come from, they don't always trust law enforcement, so it's important to us to kinda break down those barriers and build one community instead of multiple communities. So that's been a, a great time with the, the city of Sioux Falls. They've been awesome with the police department and helping us with that. We have upcoming celebrations. Um, our next one is gonna be on June ninth, uh, the Festival of Cultures. That'll be downtown at the Coliseum. So just another way as, for us to get out there in the community, let them know what we do. And, um, again, break down those barriers that are out there within the community. So, you guys are more than welcome to join us, uh, at the Festival of Cultures downtown. We do other fundraisers. All of our programming is, um, based on fundraising and grants. That sufficiency is important for not only the after-school program, but our job skills program. We cannot operate without it. So, um, we do what we can to, um, with a few different fundraisers throughout the year. One of them's gonna be our, um, International Chef Cookoff. And that's a great time. It's a lot of different ethnic food, lots of, um, uh, being able to network with different people as well. So, um, I think that kinda wraps up most of our, uh, services and our adult programs. And I think Jay's got just a little closure for you guys. And thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, Jay.
Good morning. Jay Sokup, seven three zero four Grand R. Record, Sioux Falls. Uh, a lot of familiar faces up here. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank each and every one of you. I know each and every one of you up here, I have seen you involved in the Multicultural Center in any number of different ways, through our intergovernmental board meetings, through our fundraisers, through our luncheon learns. And, uh, I know that you know what we do over there. And I know that you know and recognize that what we do is important over there. And I just wanna thank you for your, uh, for your past support and your ongoing support. And, uh, to let us know if you have any questions or anything else that we could tell you about our great organization.
Okay. Any questions for Jay? Thank you, guys, for what you do. Um, we all were immigrant families at one point in our life, and it's nice that we have services that try to help these people because the immigrants have long ago kinda got thrown into the mix of stuff and had to figure it out. And at least now there's a place for immigrants to come, to ask questions. So thank you for what you do. Your program with having the Sioux Falls PD, I'm excited to hear that. I think I did know of that before, but when I was at one of these last peer reviews, um, on the East Coast, that was one of the programs that South Carolina talked about, the county that we were in, that said had been extremely successful to them, not only immigrant populations, but other groups within their, their county and how successful that been. So it's nice to know that we're doing that, too. So, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is, uh, item number fifteen, which is authorize the chairman to sign Sioux Valley Southwest Electric Agreement for, um, utility relocation, relocation on Highway one thirty-seven Reconstruction Project. DJ, good morning, DJ. You've been here a while, too.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Try to keep it, uh, short and sweet. Uh, this year, the county highway department is reconstructing, reconstructing a section of County Highway one thirty-seven, uh, which is north of Crooks, uh, just west of I twenty-nine. And as part of that project, uh, there is a Sioux Valley Energy Power Line that runs along the corridor. Uh, within the project limit, uh, there is about sixty-eight power poles. Most of those reside, um, on private easement, and, and some of them are on the right of way. And so twelve of those, uh, that are on private easement, uh, they do need to be relocated at the cost of, of the county highway department. The remaining ones, uh, that are, uh, in the right of way, they can, uh, be relocated, uh, at the cost of the Sioux Valley Energy Co-op. Uh, the total project cost for the relocation is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, through, I think, probably a couple months of negotiations, uh, with our attorney's, state attorney's office and assistance from the attorney's office, working with the attorneys on state, uh, Sioux Valley Energy. We've negotiated that to about thirty-nine thousand dollars. And so we have today presented to you an agreement with Sioux Valley Energy, uh, payment from Minnehaha County to the Co-op for thirty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and seven four cents. Uh, that's essentially our portion to relocate, uh, twelve of the poles of the sixty-eight that need to be relocated. And, and, uh, that will allow us to continue on with the project and, and do our dirt grading and, and build out our embankments and, and, uh, make sure that we have proper drainage in, in the ditch section.
Questions for DJ? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is, um, next we have item number sixteen, is there any liaison reports? Any none? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? I would mention that the parking lot across the street, they've started to do dirt work. If you were like me and very unobservant when you drove up, I missed it. So you can peek out the window and see the dirt work going, which will be really nice to have that parking lot completed. And with that, I would ask for a motion to move into executive session immediately following, I would say probably five to ten minutes as we clean up the, turn off the, uh, microphones. But, um, following commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, parts one and three.
So moved.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.